Good evening. I want to share with you a reading from the Daily Word magazine that I believe would be a perfect invocation for tonight. It's on wisdom. Wisdom is more than intellectual discernment or logic. It comes from the heart and soul. With wisdom, we look beyond appearances and perceive the divine potential inherent within every circumstance, every person. Through prayer, we develop and strengthen our ability to make wise choices. We connect with God and open our hearts and minds to possibilities we did not recognize before. A daily connection with our divine nature helps us listen deeply, see clearly, choose wisely, and advance joyfully. From within the silence of prayer, new possibilities arise and our capacity for wise discernment grows. We accept this blessing after the nature of the indwelling Christ presence, and so it is. Amen.
Please join me in the pleas of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the June 17 Vero Beach Regular City Council meeting. I'll open the meeting with that. Mrs. Bach, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here.
All right, preliminary matters, additions, deletions, adoption of the agenda. There seems to be two items that are very similar, 8-2.
And 5A.
And 5A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I ask that those be consolidated.
Well, why don't we just move 8-2 up to 5A, and then you can handle as you see fit. Would that be satisfactory?
Absolutely.
Are there any further?
Yes, Mayor, staff would like to add one item, the July 4 event, under the City Clerks Matters.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Move for approval as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. It carries. All right. Proclamations. Ms. Amelia, I believe you have the first one.
Yes, I do. Karen Deagle? Thank you. Okay. Whereas June 19, 2014, marks the ninth annual National Dump the Pump Day as a day that encourages people to ride public transportation to save money, revitalize communities, protect the environment, reduce our dependence on foreign oil, and improve the quality of life for all Americans. And people who ride public transportation can save, on average, more than $10,174 per year based on today's gas prices, the cost of owning a car, and the average unreserved parking rate. And every $1 invested in public transportation generates approximately $4 in economic return, powering community growth and revitalization. And U.S. public transportation use reduces the country's carbon footprint by 37 million metric tons, the equivalent of the amount of electricity used by New York City, Washington, D.C., Atlanta, Denver, and Los Angeles combined. And public transportation use in 498 urban areas in the United States saved 865 million hours annually in travel time and 450 million gallons of fuel. And without public transportation, annual congestion costs would have risen from $121 to $142 billion. And public transportation is an important part of our nation's transportation system and provides citizens with travel options other than driving. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim June 19, 2014, as National Dump the Pump Day in Indian River County. The Senior Resource Association's GO Line Indian River Transit System will join with public transportation agencies across the country and participate in the ninth annual Dump the Pump Day to encourage transit ridership on June 19, 2014.
Thank you. I'm Karen Deagle. I'm the CEO with the Senior Resource Association, and we, of course, also run the transit system for the county, which is the GO Line fixed route and our Community Coach. Thank you very much for the proclamation. We really appreciate it. It is the ninth annual National Dump the Pump Day, and we encourage everyone on that day, including yourselves, to dump the pump and ride our transit system. We do have 14 routes throughout the county, and we run from 6:00 a.m. in the morning until 7:00 p.m. at night, and I encourage everyone to take the transit system on that day, just to give it a try. Also on that day, I invite you to participate in a presentation that we're doing at the Mueller Campus Richardson Center at 9:00 in the morning. We are going to answer questions, do a presentation about riding transit and how to use it. I feel a lot of the reasons why people don't use public transportation is they're scared to get on the bus because they're scared they're not going to be able to get off the bus. So we want to teach people how to use our system. So we welcome the public. Again, it's 9:00 in the morning. We will have refreshments. We'll be discussing the GO Line, how to use the GO Line, and also how to become eligible if you are able to be, to use the Community Coach system. So again, thank you very much for the proclamation, and please dump the pump.
Karen, do you have a website that everybody?
Yes, it's golineirt.com.
All right, Lisa and Donald Crutch, are you here?
Well, we have a proclamation, and I shall read it anyway. It's about cancer survival. I am actually a cancer survivor, so I picked this one because it meant something special to me. I'll read it as follows, and it's Chef's Appreciation Day, August 16, 2014. Whereas the National Pink Tie Organization, NPTO, bans men together to support the fight against cancer by encouraging men nationwide to wear a pink or fuchsia tie to raise awareness, educate, and empower the community about cancer. And whereas the NPTO's Chefs Against Cancer Division includes over 400,000 chefs and is growing rapidly worldwide. And whereas the NPTO chefs have made the commitment that their colleagues and families will not be alone when the going gets tough. And whereas the Chefs Against Cancer honor chefs every Thursday, Saturday, every third Saturday in August by gathering local chefs, physicians, nutritionists, and fitness trainers for the annual Chef's Appreciation Day to promote healthy living and cooking, uplifting one another, and give back to those who have already helped so many others realize how truly wonderful a happy, healthy life can taste. And whereas the residents of the City of Vero Beach support their efforts in the fight against cancer, honor the survivors, and remember those who will ever live in our hearts. Whereas it is fitting and proper that the City of Vero Beach extend official recognition to the National Pink Tie Organization and support its efforts in the fight against cancer. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim Saturday, August 16, 2014, as Chef's Appreciation Day and urge all citizens to join us as we acknowledge this outstanding organization and exemplary individuals. Does any of the council have any further information on this to give?
Ms. Bach, do you have an address we can send that to?
I do. I'll make sure they get it.
All right. Last year, I wore a pink tie. That was entertaining. Presentation by the Vero Beach Air Show Committee. I would imagine I know who that is. Marty?
Good morning. Evening. I'm used to coming in front of you guys in the morning. Yeah, I'm used to you guys being, yeah. You can see I'm still, Eric just handed me an invoice for the air show before we walked out. Eric's like, really, man? So anyway, we are here tonight. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving us the time to, take a little time to give a little presentation, a little wrap-up. As you know, it's hard to believe it's almost a month after what is over a month after the air show. It has gone by quick. We had a fantastic time. We hope all of you enjoyed it and the community itself. All of our board cannot be here tonight with us for this presentation, but I would like to recognize who is here with us. We have Ms. Ellen Ross, who is our sponsorship chair, as well as our board of directors. We have none other than this guy who's all over the place, Marty Zickert, Blue Angels Liaison, retired Air Force Colonel, who's now, I think, an honorary member of the United States Navy. We also have that guy who we couldn't do without, Eric Minger, and his team at the airport with Todd Sheeran and his staff, instrumental in making this happen. And board member and our treasurer, Patrick Graham, who is handling, he's having the fun part now with all the numbers. So anyway, so that's here. And I am Todd Howard, the president of the organization. Real quick, we have just a little video we're going to show you, but a few notes beforehand. It was a success on all fronts. We could not do it without our volunteers, which were, by the time we were done, over 1,000 volunteers. Our sponsors, from Piper to Scripps to Treasure Coast to Southern Eagle and many others, just could not have done this without them. And also with the community, the city, the county, the folks that came out to see the show. It's one thing that I liked. This is in the city limits at the city airport. There wasn't a, hey, this is a city event, county event. Everybody, everybody came together, and that's what made this such a huge success. We have over, we had over 50,000 people for the weekend. Economic impact, we're still running those numbers, but it looks like we're going to be just around a $1 million impact over the week. That would have not occurred without having the air show, so we're very happy about that. And some of the numbers that a lot of people are anxious to hear, and we're still finalizing it, you can see we still have invoices, and we're still getting money coming in as well. But the four charities that we have, we can absolutely say with 100% assurance, we are happy to report we'll be giving over $100,000 back to those charities. There's four groups. Each of them will get a portion of that, but it was a very successful fundraising event for the first time, and we really appreciate it. So without further ado, a little bit of fun stuff. If you guys don't mind, the video's a little bit over four minutes. I think the time will go by quick. We're going to relive the air show a little bit, and then I want to turn it over to Marty so he can tell you a little bit of feedback from the Blue Angels and wrap it up. So let me move on over here to the. And all of you, everybody. Fun stuff. I hope you don't mind reliving that. As you can tell, we feel right back there, and we just can't thank everybody enough for making that happen. Next time we see if we can't get Mr. Mayor in Shockwave, test it out on Friday around 375 miles an hour.
That would be a different mayor, by the way.
So, I don't know. We can make arrangements. This is the first time. We can make some special provisions. So anyway, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to now Colonel Marty Zickert so he can give you some good news about the Blues, and then we have a little gift for you afterwards.
Unaccustomed as I am to being here, the show was fantastic. The Blues had nothing but rave reviews. They said it was one of the best shows they've ever done. They said it was one of the best communities they've ever been in, most hospitable they've been in. It was the closest they have ever been able to park in front of a crowd, and that's due to Eric. So it was spectacular. I had nothing but compliments from them. I worked with, there was 57 of them here, and every single one of them had a good time. And it was all because of the way they were treated in Vero Beach. They stayed in the Holiday Inn on the island. They were able to walk everywhere. I can't say some of the comments, they said, but they were all good. Everything was great. They enjoyed it. And the important one is I got an email back two days afterwards that said, "One of the best places we've ever been. We want to come back." When you get that kind of a report that says, "We want to come back," all the things we got from them, they can, they'll be eligible to come back in two years. They do a two-year cycle, and besides, we're tired. So we learned a lot, but it was the support of you folks that that made it possible and the support of the community. I've never seen anything bring a community together like this. It was spectacular. The money that we made on it is going to fantastic causes. Three exchange clubs. It's all about prevention of child abuse, and of course, you know the Veterans Council, what we do for veterans in the county. So without further ado, we got a couple things from the Blues. We got a very nice lithograph that says, "Best wishes, Blue Angels, Vero Beach County Commission." Just checking, just checking. It's the Vero Beach City Council. It is signed by all the Blues.
That is beautiful. Thank you.
Mayor? Let's all stand up and do a photograph.
It is beautiful.
Craig, you particularly, you're the.
Thank you, Jason.
Why aren't you taking pictures? We can find a place to honor.
Why don't we move it up on the table for the public?
I agree. That'd be wonderful.
Right now. Marty, if you don't mind, if you'll put it up on the table.
Level one.
People can come by.
Go right on down, Marty.
Two on this side.
Get you in the middle.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you. Congratulations, guys.
Well done. Really well done.
You made it.
Well done, Marty.
No kidding. It was great dealing with the spots. I'm jealous of your shirt. Thank you. Thank you. It is.
Well, that was, that was a wonderful event, and it was so much fun, and this was fun. Now we have to go on to business, unfortunately. With the City's Council's permission, under public comment, we have our two attorneys here. It might be appropriate to, because they're here for a limited time, we're paying for them to have any public comment or questions while they're here, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, that's good.
Absolutely.
Okay. I guess the two of you come up, and I believe Mr. Iago is going to talk first and then Mr. Wright. And you were going to talk about moving forward, and Mr. Iago?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members, honorable council members. So I wanted to address, first of all, FPL's position. So FPL, and I have a statement to read that they provided us. FPL remains committed to the agreement and is actively considering solutions to the issues raised by FMPA. FPL also is supportive of the city, considering other options to lower its electric rates, and FPL has indicated that it will work reasonably and collaboratively with the city in this regard. Specifically, for example, FPL has indicated it will work with us on an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement to allow the city to pursue retiring generating units at the Vero Municipal Power Plant. FPL has also indicated that it would not stand in the way of the city initiating any other discussions it wishes to have in an effort to lower its power costs, including possible discussions with OUC. If I can just mention a comment about OUC. The city sent a letter to OUC discussing the proposal to retire some of the power-generating units to save money and to work with OUC on the possibility of reducing the cost of power under your existing agreement, the 2008 agreement with OUC. Council at OUC was concerned about embarking on those discussions while there's contracts in place between the city, FPL, and OUC. And so we called FPL and talked to them about that, and the statement is a result of those discussions, that FPL, while they are not ready to throw in the towel on the agreement, they are willing to discuss, and it may not be an amendment, it may be a simple agreement between the three parties, to make it clear that the city is able to have those discussions and to work on saving money at the plant and with OUC.
John, as far as further steps, then, that you and Mr. Wright will take into the near future, then?
Yes.
I mean, where do we go from there?
I'm going to speak with Chris Browder at OUC, and we're both going to talk with council at FPL and try to make something happen immediately, you know, by next week so we can get this three-page, this three-party letter in place so that Jim and his staff can work directly with OUC.
Or for the public, and maybe Jim should be the one to say this, but we get 65% of our power from OUC, so the cost there is of concern. We entered a 20-year contract in 2008, which actually became effective January 1, 2010. The other thing is both Florida Power and Light, under the Florida Power and Light Agreement of February 2013 and under the OUC Agreement of 2010, we have to have both of their permissions to make changes at the plant. And so there's those two issues. What can we do looking at rates, what we pay for power from OUC? We don't know, of course. And the second one would be, what can we do in the way of lessening costs? We spent something over $4 million, Jim, on the plant every year?
Yes, we did. That was about three years ago, and so we have spent the money on the plant, but it was more of refurbishing older existing facilities.
Well, I was talking about the ongoing fixed costs is around $4 million.
Oh, yes. On an annual basis, it's about a $4 million savings if you took it offline.
Well, and I think we need to be clear about that, too, in that not to get expectations too high, in that if we make changes at the plant, there's consequences of that that would have costs.
Oh, they must definitely are. It's having to.
And those have not been studied, so.
No. And having to purchase that additional power that, you know, whether you purchase it from OUC or whatever, that we have to have that peak power purchase cost incurred, and using OUC's rates, that could be as much as $8 million. So whatever savings you have goes away. I mean, it's certainly something that has to be carefully studied because I'm not sure that we're going to see any significant savings. And at best, even $4 million would be a 4% reduction in your rate.
Well, to be clear, what we're doing immediately is just laying the groundwork to make OUC comfortable that we can pursue these discussions that will be more study required.
Certainly, to continue, yeah. I think it's certainly worthwhile, at least, having the discussion and looking at the options.
Yeah, I'm more hopeful of how it'll end up, but that remains to be seen. I don't think anyone knows at this point. So anything further, John, on that subject or others that you would, I'm sure there'll be questions for you?
I don't have anything on the FPL. I think Chef is going to address another topic.
Yeah, Chef is going to address another topic that the city manager, Jimmy, you might want to give the background on that.
Yes, we have sent letters to both FPNL and OUC. The 1-2 OUC was to do some modifications to our contract in order to start taking steps that would rearrange our organization as far as the generation part of our plant. And what we're talking about there is that we would take our units offline and take our plant, not necessarily take the building down, but we would leave the substation where it is. A lot of the battery packs and that support service is inside that building, so we would leave it in place. But we would just sort of take it offline and quit using the power generation facilities. In that discussion, we also sent a letter to FPNL advising them that this is disposal of assets and that we would need some help in modifications to the contract because part of the contract is that their acquisition of these facilities, and they have indicated, as John pointed out, willingness to work with us. And so we have both of those parties, OUC and FPNL, that we will have rely on. We are now putting together the transmission of another piece of correspondence that will ask FPNL to perform the transmission study for us. It's probably a lot of information, hopefully they already have because they did that entering into the contract, but we would get them to do a transmission study to find out what is the transmission upgrades that are necessary. We think that there is at least one transformer at the Emerson Substation that may be necessary. And then also what is our capacity needs and how we'd go out with an RFP in order to meet those capacity needs to make up the differential in what the power plant presently supplies.
Okay, and then Chef, we had asked you, as a result of the last City Council, to explore what legal remedies we have, if we have legal remedies, as the case may be. You wrote an opinion.
Yeah, as I understand it, I was asked a specific question, and that question was, is whether the city can bring an action to invalidate the contracts with any realistic hope of success. And I studied all pertinent documents, including the applicable statutes relating to bond validations, project contracts, the courts, the circuit court validation judgments, the opinions of your city attorney given in support of each of the bond issued, issued each of the bond, bonds that, series that were issued, and the contracts themselves. And I can do this pretty quickly, but the opinion is this. FMPA was authorized to issue the bonds. FMPA was authorized to issue the bonds. They issued them duly under their statute. By their statute, they're authorized to use the provisions of Chapter 75, which is the bond validation statute. It's not real long. But especially in this case, they were authorized both to have the bonds validated and the project contracts and all the other agreements, the participation agreements between FMPA and FPL for St. Lucy, participation agreements between FMPA and OUC for the Stanton projects, as well as other ancillary documents. The circuit court issued its validation judgments, validating all the bonds and the contracts. In the case of the St. Lucy, bonds and contracts, that decision was appealed to the Florida Supreme Court, which affirmed, and to give you an idea of how final this is, under Section 7509 Florida statutes, which talks about the effect of the final validation judgment, that judgment is forever conclusive as to all matters adjudicated against the plaintiff, which would be FMPA in a validation complaint, and all parties affected thereby, which would include the city, and the validity of the bonds and the related agreements shall never be called in question in any court by any person or party. The Florida Supreme Court has explained the policy underpinnings from this in another case, where they say, said, "Public policy demands that we adhere to our many holdings that a validation decree, once it becomes final, puts at rest all questions which were raised in the validation, as well as all questions which could have been raised." And if you think about it, this makes perfect sense. The state of Florida and its political subdivisions don't want the validity of their credit called into question down the road. Based on our analysis of the statutes, the contracts, the decisions of the courts, the opinions of the Vero Beach City Attorney, it's our conclusion and opinion that the city cannot bring an action to have the project contracts declared invalid with any realistic hope of success. Any such action would be barred by the statute and probably also precluded by the fact that the city attorney gave opinions affirming the validity and enforceability of the contracts. So that's our opinion. That's our opinion as to the validity and enforceability of the contracts according to their terms.
Mr. FM, you said "city attorney," which "city attorney" at what time? Was this when they were, it's time of signing of these agreements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, 1983, '84, and '92.
Yeah. And did you examine these contracts from an antitrust standpoint?
I did not. I considered antitrust issues here, and I will just tell you, I'm happy to do more research on that.
Now, I'm just inquiring if you did or not, Mr. Wright, that's all.
I didn't delve into that in depth. It's somewhat difficult for me to imagine what the antitrust claim would be. You know, the fundamental gravamen of an antitrust claim has to be that the putative defendant, FMPA, I guess in this case, has to be guilty of monopolization, or attempting to monopolize, or other anti-competitive actions in restraint of trade. And when they entered into these contracts, you know, we volunteered, we and 19 other cities voluntarily entered into the contracts.
But certainly, the circumstances have changed when you had many of these cities that their ratepayers were only within their city limits, and now, not only the city of Vero Beach, but many of the other FMPA municipal utilities are serving far broader ranges of ratepayers than ever envisioned.
That's also a true statement. Like I said, I didn't research it. It's hard to see where that gets into a claim that FMPA is engaged in attempts to monopolize or anti-competitive behavior.
Thank you.
Sure. And if you're worried about the city being sued for antitrust, you're protected, in my opinion, by state action immunity doctrine, because where you serve, you're protected by the territorial agreement between the city and FPL.
Mr. Connor, where do we go from here?
In my opinion, and talking to both of our attorneys, is that we proceed with a three-party agreement that would be FPL, OUC, and ourselves, in order to allow us to start looking at options for reduction of our rates. And at the same time, we will be talking to FPNL. What other options can we have? I've talked to maybe Bungus on a couple of occasions, and they are ready and willing to sit down and talk to us again, if we can come up with some options and alternatives to these power supply agreements. The real key is, is that we own power supply agreements that, right now, have no market value, as a matter of fact, or negative market value, and we have to find an eligible body in order to take that, those power supply contracts. We have not been able to identify one, and we have obviously relied on FPNL to help us in trying to identify those, and we just have not been able to break through that door yet.
What you're telling us is the sale, as we originally envisioned it, is dead?
As we originally envisioned it, yes, sir.
Just want to get that on the table.
And I think I, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
I met with FPL, in fact, the afternoon of the last meeting that I attended on June 3, and we talked for a while, and we said, "We're not ready to throw in the towel." And "we're not ready to throw in the towel." I said, "Y'all got any ideas as to what we can do?" And they said, "We don't have any specific ideas at this time." I don't either, but we are leaving the door open to see if there might be something out there that can be figured out. And that's where FPL is, and they're a contract partner. Here we are.
And so I continue to feel that the electric utility rates are a vital issue for not only the city, but for our county, for all our ratepayers, for our economic development. Our city residents have said, "Yes, we want to get out of the utility business. We want to sell to FPL." It's still incumbent on the council for us to continue to seek whatever options may be there. And obviously, this first approach, you know, we're dead in the water, but that doesn't mean that all doors are closed and that we need to continue to keep seeking options.
Counsel, are there further comments or questions from counsel or from the city staff?
No, sir. Just going back to Mr. Fletcher's question, is it dead in the water as we envision it right now? And the answer is yes, but again, we will still work with FPNL in order to try to see if there are other options and alternatives.
A revolting development, to say the least, because we had planned to sell the utility and use the working capital to fund the unfunded pension we have. But be that as it may, in February, we talked about, we went into various steps to lower rates, and we've done, I think, seven right now. Only two of them actually have lowered rates. Lots of them are exploratory. Rates are actually 5.4% lower than they were in December, which is minimal, of course, I have to say. It's disappointing. But beyond that, the Finance Commission has got 18 ideas. The last city council empowered the city manager to work on, and you may want to comment on that, Jim, looking at having an outsider help us, and so why don't I ask you to comment on that? But I would say that I do believe, Mrs. Turner and I don't agree, and neither of us has come up with a number, and I won't come up with a number, because I don't know what the number is, but I believe we can get our rates down significantly. I don't believe we'll get them to Florida Power and Light.
Mr. FM, just a minute. You said this 5.2% reduction. I would like to remind the public that that 4.2% reduction was strictly an over-budget number. I mean, that was based on power costs that we had over-budgeted. That is a temporary reduction. That is nothing longstanding. That is no permanent cuts in your bill, and that can go away tomorrow. So please keep that in mind when they're talking about reductions. You want something that's sustaining. You know what? And we're not there yet. We haven't found it.
We're not there yet. We haven't found it, but that 4.2 can also grow, and we've got ideas to do that. So we don't agree. I think we can do far better. She thinks we can do far worse. We won't know that till the autumn, I don't think. But Jim, if you, any further comment, please?
Yes, we are doing the RFP, trying to put that together. As a matter of fact, I was emailing with a vendor today that are looking at, we're trying to get this into one package, if at all possible, the optimization, as well as the rate structure survey, and to make sure that we have one reporting entity, if that is at all possible. It may or may not be, but we are trying to structure that RFP. The purchasing department, finance, as well as the electric department are working on that.
And for the public, I guess it's been two years, I'm not quite sure. We did a study of water and sewer, an optimization, a study of the entire facility, and we improved the operations a great deal. Just because we did the water a great deal doesn't mean we can do the electric, but we're committed to try. I'd like to open up the floor now to public comment only on the subject of the electric. We'll come back to other subjects, but we're paying both of these gentlemen to be here, and I would like them to answer your questions rather than Jim or I, if we can. So if there's someone that would like to come forward on the electric, by all means do so.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Charlie Wilson, 2134 18th Avenue in Vero Beach. Couple things, I've got a couple of things I want to talk to the counsel about. It really doesn't have to do with the attorneys. I think the idea that attacking the basis of the contracts is not anything that anybody suggested. It isn't what I've suggested and wasn't what I asked. I think we have legal options and legal avenues to pursue that do not include just looking at the 1983 review by the Florida Supreme Court. The fact is, is that I agree that a negotiated sale of the Vero Electric to FPNL may be dead, and if it is dead, it didn't die of natural causes. It was murdered. So our first responsibility is to the citizens of Vero Beach, so those who are very happy that the negotiations have been sabotaged, certainly...
Mr. Wilson, I'm going to move to a question on that, because, you know, that's your opinion.
It's certainly, and he's allowed to give his opinion, Mr. Mayor.
I understand.
You shouldn't be interrupting his public comment.
Well, go ahead.
Sorry.
Every time. I assume that that was going to happen. So going forward, what can we expect now? I think it's very clear that many employees will now needlessly lose their jobs that had previously been protected by FPNL. A negotiated agreement, which was preferred, now gives way to more expensive and longer-term options, including legal, legislative, regulatory, and political options. I did discuss this with some of our legislators the other day, and one of the things that we forget is that legislators make laws that lawyers then follow. So, or sometimes follow. But make no mistake about it, the problem that we need to make sure that the public understands is that legal action is inevitable. It is certain that, and it will either be certain because we are a defendant, or because we are doing the litigating. Because of the sale, we're going to face mounting legal bills, whichever thing that we do. It depends on whether we stand alone or we stand in a group, and that's one of my questions to the attorneys. It also delays, as the mayor has said, I, Mr. Mayor, I hoped that your direction and the policy of a negotiated settlement would work. The fact is that it hasn't, and the fact is, is that some of us knew that it never will, because we do not have a seller operating in good faith that is motivated to do that. Essentially, what we said, would you, we asked FMPA, "Would you like us to keep sending you money?" And FMPA said, "Sure." And so my problem is, is that now we have been told, and maybe it was just in a moment of desperation, and I'll let you amend it, but we were told at the Men's Republican Club where I attended, that our option is, is that the sale is dead, get over it. And I'm not sure that "get over it" is a plan for our future, because we're still going to have these expenses, we're still going to have. We have been presented with a bill from FMPA, who now has no restrictions at all. They can do anything they want. Now we've been presented with a bill of nearly $50 million for stranded costs. We haven't asked what those stranded costs are, and you know what? We haven't talked about our stranded assets. How about you keep your stranded costs, and we'll keep our stranded assets? So the situation, the thing that's important to know is that the situation is going to get worse, not better, worse, and it could get much worse. So get over it. The worst idea we ever did was get in the FMPA. The second worst idea we could ever do is give up and stay. So we have legislative remedies, we have legal remedies, we have, so one of the questions, what happens if all of a sudden, there is a statewide ballot initiative, or a legislative initiative that says utilities operating in the state of Florida can make a choice? They can either be a regulated monopoly, or they can be in competition. Because the reason you have a monopoly is because you agree to a fair rate, and you agree to fair operations, and you agree to operating on behalf of the ratepayers. When you quit doing that, then you either have a choice. You can stay in business, but you are not protected from competition, because if FMPA members across this state have a choice, they'll leave in the thousands. Now, take that to this faceless, nameless bond administrator, who seems to now be in charge of our city. So my question, then, is, one of the things I've learned is, it's not, when we come and ask for how we're going to do that, one of the ways that you can do it is just turn around and say, "If this were you, Mr. Attorney..." Because we're in a divorce. We're in a divorce. We're trying to get out of an abusive divorce, and the FMPA is telling us, "We have to stay, or else they're going to financially ruin us." Okay? What would you do? So the idea is that we don't need to give up. If I had cancer, as we discussed earlier, and somebody told me I only have a 10% chance by taking a very expensive, very difficult chemotherapy treatment, I'd take it. What we have in the city of Vero Beach, unfortunately, is a cancer that could kill this city, and we need to take whatever effort, whatever path, that we need to get us out. Otherwise, it's called reorganization of our utility, and that's the other question. This is not, the utility is not the city. The utility, I believe, is an enterprise owned, or an enterprise fund, is it not? And the call that they have, one of the things I talked to Mr. Iago about, is that FMPA has absolutely no call on the taxpayer or any asset of the city. They only have the ratepayer. So if you separate, and we may end up having to go forward to separate and reorganize our utility. So the question is, what happens in all these cases? What happens in a reorganization? I understand that those contracts are set aside by a circuit judge, or by a bankruptcy judge. Tell that to the bond counsel, because what we need to do, we may not be able to change that contract, but we can change the circumstances for which we operate under that contract. And let me tell you this, we will not get over it. Thank you.
Would either of the attorneys want to comment going, okay, no comment. Mr. Herron?
Good evening, counsel. Glenn Herron, I live at 1964 Gray Falcon Circle, Southwest. I get the impression that there is groundwork being laid to cancel the contract, and there's been some commentary that the contract is dead. Well, last I checked, the contract doesn't expire until December 2016, and that leaves us with some time to find some solutions. So I would disagree that the contract is dead, and we certainly have time to negotiate with the FMPA, if that indeed be possible. I believe that canceling the contract is not only a violation of the public's will, it's certainly not in the public's best interests. And the city clearly faces three major issues, two of which have been alluded to here tonight. One, the city has roughly $90 million in underfunded pensions and other post-employment compensations that is not on the books of the city of Vero Beach. They are merely a footnote on the books of the city of Vero Beach. The FPNL deal not only was going to save the employees, the electrical employees, the power plant employees, they were going to go work for FPNL for two years. The proceeds from that sale was going to get, was going to make a significant dent in that underfunded liability, which Mayor Winger had quite accurately pointed out. So that was a good deal. The city of Vero Beach, the FPNL deal, was a good deal from a pension standpoint, especially The city of Vero Beach, the FPNL deal was a good deal from a pension standpoint, especially in light of the $90 million that is not on the books and is merely a footnote. Two, in the last 14 years, the city of Vero Beach Electric has consistently been higher than FPNL. And it costs our community roughly $20 million each and every year that we continue to exist as a government-run utility with uncompetitive rates. The electric utility is not an essential service of government. Not only is the attempt by government to compete in the private sector a failure, it has failed public policy, it has failed public policy to even think about being in the utility business because it merely creates unnecessary government bureaucracy. Obviously, the sale of FPNL solves that problem too. Finally, number three, Vero Beach has been an owner in the FMPA for over 30 years. We supposedly have valuable assets in cash, investments, nuclear generation, coal, gas generation, yet after 30 years, we own nothing, nothing. Worse, as alluded to by our city manager, we're told that we have to pay tens of millions of dollars to get out of our FMPA ownership, and we've been in it for 30 years. That may well suggest that the FMPA is underwater. Now, I guess we're going to soon find that out because the auditor general will hopefully be looking at that issue. I want to talk about something that I've been talking about for several years, and that is, the FMPA, some have suggested that, you know, we're out to get the FMPA, we're out to dissolve the FMPA. We're not. We're simply looking for an equitable solution. And I've suggested in the past that there are solutions that not only are, they don't hurt the bondholders of the FMPA, they don't hold, they do not hurt the member cities of the FMPA, they don't hurt us. So the public needs answers to these three questions. What do you plan to do to pay off the $90 million in off-the-books government employee compensation liability? What do you plan to do to give us FPNL rates and allow the community to save $20 million a year? And what do you plan to do to extricate us from the FMPA in a manner that is fair and equitable to us as a member of the FMPA for the last 30 years? So is there an answer to those questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Further comment on the electric, please. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the railroad. Do we want to do the same thing there and have the railroad comments? We have three people on the agenda.
Let's have all three speakers and then do comments.
And then we'll do comments. So the first speaker is Mr. Ken Dag, please.
Thank you, John.
Is this different from the pack we got before? No, just a copy of what we had at our, no. It is different, okay, no. Just highlighted. Same pack.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counsel. My name is Ken Dag. My address is 1846 Twenty-first Avenue. I am the High Speed Rail Chairman. I'd like to just go over a couple of things, what I just gave you, some current events. City Council consents as production of a product from the High Speed Rail Commission. The Passenger Rail Project, as it now is called by all aboard Florida, is a fluid issue. The High Speed Rail Advisory Commission product is not finite. Examples follow, which is in that packet there for your reading when you have time. Our request as a designated cooperating agency in the preparation for the DEIS was denied, as was Indian River County and the city of Sebastian. Governor Scott has requested and was denied by the FRA for extra comment days for the DEIS, which is the environmental impact study. Within that request, the governor stated locals have to request funding for quiet zones and match the funding dollar for dollar. Bloomberg reports Fortress plans to borrow to complete their project. Within this report, it states that the train will speed past smaller, less affluent towns and cities along Florida's east coast without stopping. In response to a public record request, All-Aboard Florida filed suit to block the study, which is an extremely sensitive and commercially valuable document, the disclosure of which to the public could place All-Aboard Florida at an unfair competitive disadvantage. Airlines and other transportation alternatives. Number five, the St. Lucie County Commission passed a resolution opposing All-Aboard Florida, calling the project a threat to public health, safety, and welfare. Editorial on local legislation passed includes mention of All-Aboard Florida, the likelihood of local governments having to pay for quiet zones. I spoke with our county administrator, Joe Byrd, and the assistant county attorney. A meeting with the county attorney is planned. I met with John King, Director of Emergency Management Services here at the county. And for the record, neither hospital in our county is a trauma center. And I also attended the Executive Republican Club where Rusty gave a presentation. I will now go into our report. Report from the High Speed Rail Commission summary. The High Speed Rail Commission has held nine public meetings, provided an interim report to the city council. We have received presentations from Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, the Indian River County Planning Agency, All-Aboard Florida, county commissioners, and concerned citizens. Comments by concerned citizens questioned the feasibility of the project, the negative impact on local traffic flow, noise level, property values, public safety issues, and potential costs to the taxpayers. Additional information is available on the city websites. That includes correspondence received regarding the high-speed rail. At this time, Ms. Vock, tell people how they can get to the site, please.
If you go on the city of Vero Beach website, on the right-hand corner, you will see a little notation that says High Speed Rail Commission. If you click that on, then it will bring up all the information that we have so far on the High Speed Rail information.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Findings, number one, and I'm going to try to just pull out some of the pertinent information so I don't read each word, because I know you guys have a busy night, but just for the general public. Number one, under findings, increased train traffic will cause an impact on vehicle traffic during a 16-hour period each day. The impact will occur when a passenger train passes through the city 32 times a day. Furthermore, and this is at the end of the paragraph, furthermore, if freight traffic should increase in the future, this will have a negative impact on vehicle traffic. Number two, without quiet zones, the trains will be sounding its horn continuously at over 90 decibels for the full passage through the city. There's more to that paragraph, but again, I'm not going to go word for word. With quiet zones, the train noise will be localized to within a short distance from the track and will be heard during train passage. The train's passage will be 10 seconds at 60 miles, 5 seconds at 110. Train noise will occur between 10 and 20 seconds each hour. Number four, the cost of quiet zones may be much less than originally estimated. Many of the quiet zone safety measures already exist for many of the city's crossings. As a result of the environmental impact study, the Federal Railroad Association may make recommendations to All-Aboard Florida requiring additional safety measures for those crossings not having the appropriate safety measures. The increased speed and the frequency of the trains will create numerous safety concerns. These concerns need to be addressed in the EIS. The cost of implementation and ongoing maintenance of any additional safety measures recommended should be the responsibility of All-Aboard Florida. One way to increase safety would be to limit the speed of the train as it passes through urban areas. Number eight, property values may be negatively impacted with the increase in train traffic. There's more to that, but I'll just leave that highlighted there. Number nine, the All-Aboard Florida project will provide no direct benefits to the city or to Indian River County as a whole. The possibility of a train stopping in Vero is remote, at best has its own issues. Although All-Aboard Florida contends that there are no taxpayer dollars being used for this project, it is the opinion of some of the members of the commission and the public that the $1.5 billion loan All-Aboard Florida has applied for from the Federal Rail Administration carries a 35-year payback at an interest rate below what is available to the private financing. It is recognized that the noise of the proposed trains and trains horns, as well as the impacts on local traffic and crossings, will carry across city limits, impacting the local quality of life. The public and the commission are concerned about the possibility of increased liability which may occur to the city of Vero Beach from this project. Recommendations. The areas where the city can mitigate the negative impact of All-Aboard Florida project are limited. The city can oppose the project and recommend it be relocated to the I-95 corridor. However, the likelihood of that happening is as low as All-Aboard Florida FEC owns existing infrastructure on the proposed route. The city needs to prepare now to deal with any negative impact of the proposed train project. The High Speed Rail Commission makes the following recommendations. The city of Vero Beach should prepare to establish quiet zones for each of the city crossings beginning at Aviation Boulevard South through each crossing to and including Sixteenth Street, and encourage the county commission to implement quiet zones at their crossings located at Fourth and Eighth Street and 12th Street. Any southbound train will be sounding its horn within city limits for these crossings. Two, the city of Vero Beach should support all safety measures recommended as a result of the EIS, which will qualify each crossing for a quiet zone. All of these costs should be borne by All-Aboard Florida. Number three, the city of Vero Beach should apply for funds to cover the quiet zone costs that may be available from the federal and state appropriations. Number four, the city of Vero Beach should work towards reducing the speed of the trains within the city of Vero Beach to a maximum of 60 miles an hour. This will improve safety and not increase significantly any traffic disruption. The city of Vero Beach should request that the FRA ensure that any required safety measures will be maintained by All-Aboard Florida FECI and All-Aboard Florida FECI expense in perpetuity as a requirement of the loan. Number six, the city of Vero Beach should continue to work with Indian River County Planning Agency, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and all other local government entities along the route of All-Aboard Florida to develop a unified voice and consistent recommendations in response to the EIS. The loan should not be granted by FRA unless fully collaborized. The city of Vero, number eight, the city of Vero Beach should contact our liability insurer to determine if this project would increase insurance cost. Any such increase should be the responsibility of All-Aboard Florida and FECI as a condition of the FRA loan. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. I try to get through that as quick as possible.
From counsel or staff, any questions? Seeing none, then Mr. Hedy.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dag.
Thank you, counsel. And I do have a minority report. And before I get to that, I think that it's important to identify why I thought it was important to give a minority report. The council, I'm sorry, the High Speed Rail Commission voted four to one in favor of the recommendations that the chairman just identified. But let me talk about those things for a minute. The summary, it said that there's been seven meetings and they've provided an interim report. That's not accurate. They provided two interim reports to you, not one. And the second one, I think, from people I've talked to, was equally as important, but they only want to talk about one. Anyway, they talked about the presentations by all the different people. Yes, there were all those presentations. But you know what? When I looked into some of the presentations, and even from members of our own council, I found out, our own commission, I found out that there was inaccuracies all over the place. So yes, we received reports, but many of them were inaccurate. Under findings, number one, said that increased traffic, increased train traffic is going to have an impact, and they talk about traffic being stopped for 60 seconds with the, they're talking about one traffic light, the equivalent of a traffic light. And I can tell you that I've sat on city council and I've been here at these meetings, and I've heard for a very long time how Downtown Association wants to do something to slow traffic down. Here's an opportunity to slow traffic down, and they're complaining about that. I guess I don't get that. And they talk about, the report talks about increase in freight traffic. Well, FEC can increase the freight traffic tomorrow morning. They don't have to go through this exercise to increase freight traffic. So, well, this is all about freight traffic. This, Mr. Hedy, this is not about high-speed train. This is about freight traffic. If they wanted to increase freight traffic tomorrow morning, they wouldn't have to spend the kind of money, they've got a representative here tonight, they wouldn't have to do all this. All they have to do is send more trains, or send longer trains. So if the perceived slowing down is accurate, I think that there might be some downtown people that would be happy. Number two says the quiet zones, without quiet zones, you're going to hear all the noise, but with quiet zones, you could still hear the noise. Because what quiet zones do, what quiet zones do, is they relieve the legal requirement of the engineer to blow the horn. He doesn't have to. It's not legally required. But if he sees traffic or if he sees pedestrians near the tracks, a good engineer, a smart engineer, a cautious engineer, a safe engineer, you know what he's going to do? He's going to blow the whistle. He's going to blow the horn. The report talks that 60 minutes, I'm sorry, at 60 miles an hour, it's going to take three minutes to go through the city from one end to the other. Three minutes, they increase the traffic or the speed, that would knock it down to one and a half minutes through the entire city if they go the speed they say they're going to go. And with quiet zones, the city is going to have to incur that cost. We're asking them, quiet zones, what we do is we ask them to provide more than what they're legally required to provide. And if we're going to ask them to provide more than they're legally required to provide, then we should be responsible for the cost. But I can tell you, I don't want to pay the cost of that. I don't want to increase my taxes for these quiet zones. And that's what will happen. And I'll bet the overwhelming majority of the people would be against additional tax to cover these quiet zones. And my guess is that residents and businesses will be outraged at paying an increase in tax to cover yearly maintenance of the safety equipment. And even with the quiet zones, the engineer's not required. He can still blow the horn, he's just not legally, he doesn't have to. Anytime he wants to, though, he can, his choice. Number three, they talk about quiet zones, the noise is going to be localized, and that the noise is going to happen between 10 and 20 seconds of each hour. You know, if you do the multiplication, there's 216,000 seconds in an hour. 216,000 seconds, and they're worried about 10 of them, and they want to spend millions of dollars on those 10 seconds, and they want to create a tax burden for those 10 seconds. And all of that paid for by the residents of Vero Beach, and to my way of thinking, that's not good use of taxpayer dollars. Number four, talks about the cost of quiet zones is going to be less than originally. Well, I've never seen the original estimates, so I don't know how they come to the determination that it's going to be less than, and I haven't seen the estimates for less than. Well, I just don't get how they make some of these statements. We don't know what the cost was, we don't want to know what the cost is going to be. It also goes on to talk about, as a result of the environmental impact study, the Federal Railroad may make recommendations, as a result of the study, the study's not out. There is no study yet. Nobody's seen the study. We've asked to see the study. Nobody's seen the study. So I don't know how they can possibly tell you what's going to happen as a result of the study that doesn't exist. That's a little much. That's a little much. I think it's 100% impossible to tell you what was out from something that doesn't happen, that hasn't happened yet, that's not complete. Number five says the increase in speed and frequency of the trains will create numerous safety concerns. Increased speed, numerous concerns. Went back and I looked. In fact, we had people appear before the commission that reported increased speed doesn't increase the accidents. In fact, if you look at ASIL, if you look at the high-speed rails that do exist in this country, you find out that they are safer than the freight trains. So slowing them down, the record, you can go to the FRA website, you can look, and the record is lowering the speed doesn't increase the safety factor at all. Number six says the cost of ongoing maintenance or additional safety measures recommended should be the responsibility of All Aboard Florida. I agree with that one. You're right. They're right. I agree with the commission. All Aboard Florida, if this is going to cost some additional things, this is their train, it ought to be their expense. Number seven says one way to increase safety, well, statistic is to limit the speed. Statistically, that's just not true. Just not true. It's not accurate. Number eight says property values may be negatively impacted with the increase in train traffic. You know, in New York, real estate that's closer to the trains, that's closer to the subways, the shorter the walk, you know what happens to the real estate value? The closer they get to the train, real estate value goes up.
Yeah, when you have a stop.
Yeah.
But we don't have any assets.
I understand. I understand. But proximity doesn't necessarily mean, unless you've got a crystal ball, I don't know how you're going to look into the future and tell me what the real estate values you're going to do. But anyway, number nine, All Aboard Florida project will provide no direct benefits. Well, there's been no evidence that there's no benefit to the city at all. In fact, I've talked about some of the benefits, and pretty well was shut down, they didn't want to hear that, but that's okay. And you know, I even went on a fact-finding mission. I traveled to Boston and took the ASIL, the only high-speed rail on the East Coast. And Tammy helped me with this. I had a slideshow there after I came back, I had a slideshow. How many times did I ask the commission, hey, you want to see this? How many times?
About four times.
Yeah. And you know what? They didn't want to see it. So you know what I did? I put it on the agenda for the next meeting. You know, you can't make this stuff up. I put it on the agenda. And I put it on the agenda, and I wanted to give a presentation, much like we saw tonight, at the head of public comment. So the chairman took public comment for that meeting, and that presentation, and moved it to the end of the meeting.
Mr. Hetty, you have three recommendations. I'm waiting.
Oh, you'll get, I'll get to them, Mr. Mayor. Have no fear.
Okay.
Have no fear.
I just, you know, time, you know.
You want to cut this off?
No, I don't want to cut it off.
Oh, okay. Then let me continue, and then we'll get through this, right? By the way, number 10, they talk about the taxpayer dollars are being used, but in the opinion of some of the members of the commission, they're getting a $1.5 billion loan, and it carries a 35. They talk about the terms of the loan, and nobody on the commission has seen the terms of the loan. So I don't know how they're coming up with this, because the, in fact, All Aboard Florida right now is taking this issue to court, because they don't want to release the terms of the loan. That's number one. But you know, the other thing is, if you look at the Federal Rail, there's a couple of criteria for a loan getting, first of all, you have to be qualified. You have to be a railroad, you know? And are they qualified? Sure. Do they meet those things? Right. And the other, there's two major things. And the other one is whether or not they have the ability to pay the loan back. And their studies show they have the ability to pay the back. So if the likelihood of repayment is there, they're going to get the loan. They're qualified, the likelihood of repayment, and why we should take a position. You know, I can hear the trains from my house, and my office is across, there's nothing but a 14th Avenue between my office and the train. And I can tell you that I've sat in my office, and I've done work. The train has never bothered me, the noise at home, my house is further away than my office, but the noise has never bothered me at home, and it's not once, ever, ever, never did it bother me when I was in the office, not once. Never stopped me from doing my work. Number 12, the public and the commission are concerned about the possibility of increased liability which may incur. Well, I think our liability, that's a concern, and it should be. Our liability is going to be directly proportional to what we do to impact what they do. If we create a quiet zone, for an example, and then there's an accident in a quiet zone, and the litigation says that the reason the accident happened was because they couldn't hear the train coming? Well, that's because of us. We're opening up liability. I think we need to be careful about that. The recommendations, area where the city can mitigate, they tell you, is limited. Well, I'm not sure that they've clearly identified any negative impact to begin with. Then they say that the city can oppose the project and recommend it be relocated to I-95. I-95? I-95? There's no railroad tracks out on I-95? They don't have any right-of-way on I-95? Anyway, not a good idea, anyway. And who are they going to oppose it to? I know of no proposal which shows I-95 as an alternate route. The report goes on to say, however, the likelihood is low because they own the infrastructure on their car. Yeah, that's right. They do. High-Speed Rail makes the following recommendation. Number one, you should prepare to establish quiet zones. You should stay away from establishing quiet zones, and you should not encourage the county commission to put us at risk or waste our city tax dollars in such endeavors. City of Vero Beach. Number two says the city of Vero Beach should support all safety measures recommended as a result of the EIS. Nobody's seen the EIS. What are they talking about? I don't know. All the costs should be borne by All Aboard Florida? Yeah, I agree with that. They want to put this railroad in, they own the railroad tracks, they're going to own the railroad, they should pay the cost. I agree. And the city should expect that they take safety measures to protect the trains, the city residents, and the businesses. Number three says city of Vero Beach should apply for funds to cover the quiet zones. Now, I love this one, when, let's apply for funds. There's, I guess, and I need to take another trip to Tallahassee. I've been there several times, I've been in Washington several times, I've worked in Washington, and not once did I ever see that magical money tree that exists up there from which they pluck dollars. Never found it. I think the only dollars the government has, they took from us first. Stole from us first might be a better word, but we'll just use took from us first. Number four says city of Vero Beach should work towards reducing the speed. Testimony is that reducing the speed doesn't increase the safety. So I don't know why you would want to do something that hasn't shown any, I mean, they're slower, the high-speed rail, the slower siblings to the high-speed rail have a worse accident record. So I don't know what that accomplished. Number five, request that they ensure safety measures. Okay, that's fine. Make it safe. Six, city of Vero Beach should work with Indian River County Planning Agency, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. You know, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council has been working very well with Florida, All Aboard Florida, and they've pretty well supported, and they've pretty well brought evidence to the High-Speed Rail Commission in support of All Aboard Florida. And it was interesting, because one of the reports that they brought, and they talked about, and this is now the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, after the meeting, I sent Tammy an email and said, could you get that public record from Kim? You know the rest of the story. I can tell just by the look on a couple of faces, yeah, that report didn't exist, there was no such report. Number seven, this one really has me, and I'm going to read this. It says the loan should not be granted by FEC, that's Florida East Coast, unless fully collateralized. The loan should not be granted by FEC. Why are we trying to involve ourselves with loans that are being given out by FEC?
It's actually FRA, I think they mean. Don't you mean, don't you think, Brian, I'm thinking they mean it?
I don't, I know what they wrote.
No, I know, but I'm just...
There was a correction to that, and it has been changed.
Okay, what is it? It's not FEC, who is it?
It's FRA.
The FRA should not, okay, well, the FRA has criteria. If they're a train, they meet the first number-one hurdle, and number-two, they can demonstrate the likelihood of repayment. So any of our efforts in that regard will be, you talked about, the lawyers talked to you before about the likelihood of success. Likelihood of success is zero to none. Number eight, the city of Vero Beach should contact, we should contact our liability insured, right? Because this could increase our insurance cost. Why would you call your insurance company and say, hey, by the way, you know what's going to happen? I think we ought to have higher premiums on this, because this is going to, you know? Really? You want to call the insurance company and tell them that something's happening, that you're going to notify them, that they might be able to increase our premiums? I don't think so.
But now you have a three-point report, right?
My report is much shorter.
Okay, let's hear it.
Fits on...
I'm ready.
Actually, it fits on half a page of paper.
Okay, let's hear it.
Number one, welcome All Aboard Florida through Vero Beach. Through, because Vero Beach is not a place where they're going to stop, and, in fact, Councilmember Turner, you pointed this out, All Aboard Florida has agreed to provisions preventing them from stopping. So if they've already agreed to provisions preventing them from stopping, then, okay, go on through. We don't have to tell them, make it quick, that's already their plan, we're going to go through fast. Number two, make it safe. Simple. Welcome aboard, welcome through, and make it safe. All Aboard Florida has a responsibility to make high-speed rail safe. Simple as that, just make it safe. Safe for trains, safe for vehicles, safe for people, safe for wildlife, make it safe for everyone. Pretty easy. Number three, most important maybe, let there be no cost to Vero Beach taxpayers. Vero Beach should not be required to pay for changes All Aboard Florida may need to make to the rails, to their crossings, their changes, their cost, their maintenance, their responsibility, and their expense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hetty. Mr. Roberts maybe have a harder job than I do.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Roberts has never tried to shut me down, Mr. Mayor, and I think that's probably a much harder job.
Thanks, Mr. Hetty. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. I sort of hesitate to do that, because I think, I'm thinking I might just defer to the resolution that Councilmember Graves gave at the very beginning about Dump the Pump Day, because I think that was my whole speech right there, about how transportation alternatives are of value and save money. But I'll go ahead and give my statement anyway, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for allowing me to be here today, and appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. I want to provide a brief update on All Aboard Florida on the intercity rail project, passenger rail project. Before, again, I begin, Mr. Mayor, I just want to first take a minute to commend the work of the Vero Beach High-Speed Rail Advisory Commission under the leadership of Chairman Daig, and also other members who are in the room, Mr. Hetty and Mr. Kurtow, I don't know if anyone else is in the room who've been served on the commission, but they've done a fine job. They really looked diligently at just about every aspect of the system's impact that one could imagine, and actually, some I could not imagine. But his committee members were thorough in their research, they were direct in their questions, and I believe that the commission was an overall credit to the process, and I appreciate the city council forming that commission, allowing us the opportunity to appear before them. The All Aboard Florida project will be one of the largest construction projects undertaken in our state in decades, perhaps not since the interstate system was built. There are not many 235-mile infrastructure projects undertaken anywhere in the world, and especially by a private company. Not since Henry Flagler first brought his train down this coast to Key West has Florida had the opportunity to benefit by a major new transportation corridor. And like Flagler's venture, this project is a private, sector-driven initiative. Though our financing includes utilizing an existing federal loan program created to enable long-term financing of freight and passenger infrastructure, it is fully collateralized, and will be repaid with private funds and with interest, much like financing on your home. These borrowed funds are supplemented by hundreds of millions of dollars in cash and equity from Florida East Coast Industries and third-party investors. Without question, members of the council, this is an unprecedented venture. Grand initiatives rarely succeed without vision and without risk, but when successful, the benefits are always fully appreciated. Henry Flagler proved that more than 100 years ago. So did Walt Disney. So did Henry Gifford, Vero's first postmaster, and many other visionaries who invested in Florida's future. Our vision seeks to create a product that serves both the 9 million people who live within the proximity of this corridor that we plan to serve, and the more than 90 million visitors who flock to Florida every year. All Aboard Florida is a new and exciting venture that is vital to the healthy economy of Florida, and it's essential to serving the 6 million more residents that are expected to live here by 2030. As our CEO recently said, great economies require great infrastructure, and that's what we're trying to build today. In the planning and development of this groundbreaking venture, we are very aware that this service will have impacts. No project of this size is without impacts. No project of this size can succeed without public input. However, the environmental impact statement process we are undergoing is designed to balance those impacts with the benefits that the new infrastructure will provide. We've heard from many individuals and local governments, asking questions, expressing concerns about those impacts. In the absence of clear, or sometimes satisfactory, answers, presumption often becomes fact. And in consideration of this, we have been very aggressive in our efforts to reach out to the citizens of Indian River County and the entire Treasure Coast in order to educate and inform. And the draft EIS document will, in my belief, allay a lot of the fears that have been created because some facts have been established without any supporting data. We had hoped that the draft EIS would have been issued by now, and that the document would have served to set the record straight on the safety, noise, maritime, and other impacts. We now expect that the draft EIS to be issued in the next several weeks, and hope that all of you will allow the data in that document to form the basis for a constructive dialogue. For example, we are not going to debate impacts to the maritime industry when the data being used is based on a hunch with no comprehensive dataset, as opposed to the conclusions that will be contained in the draft EIS. Please do not interpret this as All Aboard Florida not being committed to working with Vero Beach and all the communities within this corridor in a cooperative manner to address local concerns and answer your questions. We just need to do it in a manner where we are debating the impacts using the same set of facts. That is the purpose of the draft EIS process being issued, that is not influenced by All Aboard Florida or stakeholders. Let me provide a little my background on the EIS process. The scope of an EIS is broad and comprehensive. It includes impacts to air, water quality, marine industry, navigation, cultural resources, and historic properties. However, be assured, it will also address concerns typically expressed by the Vero Beach citizens and your advisory commission, such as noise and vibration. Once the draft is published, public meetings will be scheduled in every county, including Indian River, where this council and members of the public will have an opportunity to look at the entire scope of the project, ask questions, and provide input to the Federal Railroad Administration. So I implore you to please wait for this process to play out. Look at the project's impact and mitigations. Decide what questions and concerns still have not been answered. Then make your views official and on the record through the com- Then make your views official and on the record through the comment process. Another concern we have heard is the matter of safety at crossings and cost to local governments. Be assured, we are putting safety first in the planning and construction of the passenger system. Every grade crossing on this corridor will be upgraded with safety enhancements done in full accordance with FRA and Florida DOT guidelines. These improvements will be 100% paid for by All Aboard Florida. The city will bear zero costs. The result will create one of the safest railroads in the country, with adherence to the highest standards of safety required for operations at the speed and type proposed by All Aboard Florida. In fact, as it relates to safety, the results of the All Aboard Florida investment will be a significant improvement and tangible benefit in terms of safety and operational efficiency in this city and along this corridor. All Aboard Florida will improve the operating efficiency and reliability of the railroad through investments in new signals, communications technology, physical plan improvements to bridges and railroad capacity. These improvements mean better operation for bridges, more efficient joint operation for both freight and passenger traffic in the corridor. Our trains will be less impactful as well. They are shorter, lighter, better for the environment, and cause less vibration than freight trains. These improvements mean an overall less impact to the local communities and are a desired benefit that has been expressed repeatedly via Vero Beach and other cities. With regard to quiet zones, we are sensitive to the city's concern about additional expenses needed to make Vero Beach a quiet zone. While this is a designation that only the city can apply for under FRA regulation, we want to work with you to realize this goal. We now believe that significant investments made by All Aboard Florida into the crossings will largely pre-fund the vast majority of the costs associated with improvements needed to affect quiet zones along the corridor, eliminating the need for trains to utilize horns as a public safety warning. All Aboard Florida represents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to realize this benefit at the lowest possible cost to the city, the quickest possible timeframe, and the easiest possible process. In addition to the investment we're making, we are willing to assist with the needed engineering, bidding, and even construction management of the process as evidence of our commitment to supporting the realization of this benefit to the city. While there still will be cost to Vero Beach for this benefit, through a pre-funding agreement with the city, this work can be completed concurrently with our required safety and infrastructure upgrades, resulting in significant savings to the city of Vero Beach. And I just want to say parenthetically that without the coming of All Aboard Florida, freight train horns would remain part of the daily routine. The crossing safety assessments conducted under the auspices of the FRA and FDOT will clearly show the extent to which our work will benefit the city in terms of quiet zones. We expect these diagnostic reviews to occur in July. The city manager will be notified in advance, and your Public Works Director, Monty Falls, will be invited to participate. Another issue that has been raised relates to the effects of All Aboard Florida on the local traffic movement and emergency vehicles. We are confident that you will find these concerns to be unwarranted. Our short trains, together with improvements to the signal and communication systems in the railroad, will result in increased operating efficiency with minimum impacts. In fact, each crossing will be closed for less than one minute per half hour. And Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I'm going to walk over here. I have 45-second video I'd like you to watch. As you can see, time elapsed will be about 30 seconds before the train reaches the crossing. As you can see, that's about a 40, 45-second process for the entire crossing of the train. And also, I just want to put in, make a point that we're installing something called constant warning time, so regardless of the speed of the train, there's still a 30-second advanced notice of the gates going down before the train gets to the corridor. And with regard to emergency vehicles, I just wanted to put another way in terms of traffic movement. Any vehicle driving along this corridor under this timeframe has an approximately 97% chance of never encountering an All Aboard Florida train when approaching the tracks. And finally, members of the council, we appreciate the desire of many people to see an All Aboard Florida stop here in Vero Beach. Were this project a publicly-funded passenger system, it would be reasonable to expect stops in just about every city along the route. You would also expect to be heavily subsidizing the system through your tax dollars, just like Amtrak operates today. In fact, under current law, Amtrak now requires state and local governments to pay for all costs associated with new service. As a private system, we are constrained by budget and economics to plan and build this system in phases. So we appreciate the patience of those communities within our corridor, and respectfully ask that you take a long-term view and work with us to build a system that will eventually offer passenger rail system many more communities along this corridor. In short, members of the council, you cannot expand what doesn't exist. Though this initial phase is not stopping here now, we are part of this community. It is why I'm here today, and it's why we will remain here in the Treasure Coast, not just to explain away misinformation, but we hope, in partnership with you, to assuage concerns and ultimately build a system that becomes a distinctive, irreplaceable part of this community, one that not only complements but enhances our quality of life through better transportation, more opportunity, and a stronger economy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Roberts, remain there for a second. I would entertain questions from city council to Mr. Roberts, and then we'll take a break, if there are any.
I have a question. So when did you initially start the EIS assessment of our area? When did you put the application in to begin that process?
The EIS was submitted, I think, in January of 2013.
Okay, and I guess my next question then is, do you think that that study could have benefited by alerting us sooner so that we could have participated more actively in it as a cooperating agency?
Well, cooperating agencies usually are federal agencies, not states and not local governments. Generally, when a federal environmental impact process is conducted, it's, my understanding, it involves various federal agencies that have to study various components of the system and various impacts.
It's a good question, council member. So let me just say that when the EIS was announced, it was published in the Federal Register, it was on the Federal Railroad website, and we held public hearings more than, just about a year ago, public input meetings, we call scoping meetings, just for this purpose. So the city of Vero Beach citizens in Indian River and all along the corridor could come and participate in the process from the very beginning. So this has not been going on without public input.
I would entertain questions only from the High-Speed Rail Commission, if Mr. Daig or Don or Mr. Eddy wants to ask, but please make them brief. I'd like to get to a break here, Brian, and I'm not in any way trying to shut you down.
Amelia, to speak to your question, we had people testify before the High-Speed Rail Commission, and they told us emphatically, do not get involved with the EIS at this point. Wait until after it comes out. I objected to that, and I agree with you that we should have, but we were told absolutely do not get involved in the EIS ahead of time. We should have been, but our advice, and the advice that the High-Speed Rail Commission accepted, was to stay out of that process. And, Mr. Mayor, I understand you want to take a break, but before this started, you asked if you could do the same thing and have the public speak.
We will. After the break, we'll have the public speak. We're just, we've been running now, it'll be an hour, it'll be 6:30 to 8, so. But, Mr. Daig, if you have any question now, we, and Mr. Roberts, don't go away because there could be further questions. So it's 7:39. Five minutes to eight, we'll re-adjourn. All right? And questions, the railroad forum is still open, okay? We'll take a break.